Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our commission meeting, the third of July. Right now, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance and Anthony, would you please leave?
Certainly, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, Tara?
And then we had one credit, you all were supposed to get a letter from the chairman about some credit that we owe him. Did you know about your credit? His name, it was for Sue Ann Wilson, but she has since passed, it was for Johnny Osborne.
That was last month. We've gotten the letter, but we hadn't, we didn't have the order.
Okay.
So you just need to sign it.
Yeah.
That is.
It should be blank. Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the exoneration.
One second.
Have motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
And please.
Well, just in case.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the over assessment refund for the over assessment man's debt of the last five years.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Do we have combined by?
No.
Do we have the really cheap for me to sign?
There's nothing to sign, I'll look for you.
Oh, okay.
No, we don't have the.
All right, please. Thank you so much.
You have a copy of that?
Yes.
All right, vouchers and invoices, did you notice anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Jake didn't get a second signature for the fire chief thing.
Okay.
Um, another thing is I was puzzled by the by the fire association bid that went out and also the language in the bid. Um, the one we hadn't worked out, the bid stuff, the bids are supposed to go through here at least until we get that policy done. Um, and then there was some language in there. Let me get that right. This is specific, this was in regard to super back fans and batteries. You guys remember that penalty fee? Cause I don't.
Super power. Doc, you know anything about?
Yeah, we're using the state money, whatever that accounts off letting money for that. Last time I came in here for thermal cameras and uh, gas monitors, I came you all to bid it out. You all told me I had to pay the legal for that.
All right, and how much is roughly that state account, do you know people, Doc?
It was a hundred and seven thousand, I think, cause I mean it changes, but I don't think.
Well, we said that, I'll say it too, but I just didn't remember it.
Yeah, when I did the thermal cameras and stuff of that same account, that's, that's.
I vaguely remember that now that you are.
Yeah. It's not letting money, we're trying to buy it.
Could you please ask Jake to resubmit his fire chief's pay or the other shit? I mean, I.
He was told, I, I, I don't know why I didn't.
And maybe he had already submitted. I mean.
Okay.
Was, but, but he still didn't submit it, we made a decision last meeting.
Yeah, but with the super back fans, there's no, we're not buying on using letting money, but that we're the department tip first, if it's over that, it's going to, never is the problem.
Thanks, Josh. All right, I moved, did you move it through or?
I wasn't. No, you haven't.
I moved that we approved vouchers and invoices.
Uh, what do you want to tell you to teach about?
Accepting the chief's pay, well, including once Higia receives the signature, a second signature.
I'll say. Here's we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Um, move to approve payment over seven twenty-five?
I'll say. Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And I now move to approve the July ninth meeting minutes.
Second. Okay, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the state settlements.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. So this is the first budget revision bringing it up to actually, and most of us sit on emails and capital assets have raised jail bill, I think to one point eight, because we need it. Move to prove, prove the bu- budget revision.
Second. Motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. For, so this is, this, you need to make it a matter of minutes, um, aiming motion to approve her publishing an RFP for the Western Union Energy Efficiency Program for the Board House to replace all the light bulbs. Move to approve the publication of the RFP.
Right. Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. The records management. I think. Preservation board contract?
Yes, it's just the contract for the awarded grants for additional map cabinets for Michelle's office and which she has already procured for this year and, and additional labor for standing for the assessor's office, which is going up.
I move that the appos will bring on sign the do you want to sign those natural, it's a lot, or do you want to sign that?
I'll sign it after this. Yeah, cause there's, I remember there's a bunch of places to do that.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Um, corrections, that, those for the upcoming you just have to approve a, it's a hundred and ninety-two, hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred million dollars for the two weeks correction grant. But the place is on mark, so I felt that you know. So I know what you approved, um, accepting the grants.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Would you ask? New employee?
Yes. I'll be quick. Just on permission, I already have twenty, animal control. Uh, I gave her all this information and stuff like that.
We saw it in my packet, thank you, um, it was an employer, thank you for getting this stuff.
This discussion, uh, can, uh, how many animal control people do you have, you have two?
Well, we got two spots, this will be.
Yeah, so we've got one lady, we've got two that handle animal control.
One right now, but we got two spots.
All right. I'll second it. Okay, but motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Thanks, Jess, thanks.
You know, I used to like.
Hey, just, just call me.
You know what, we take that back, that's always for you.
Yeah.
One year. All right, and this is a support letter for the adventure of the management of current option seven. I move that we approve it.
Awesome. Motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. So the, the bid process and Wolf Creek Park developer competition in the next two. Okay, Wolf Creek Park, we um, so you guys remember when Jenna presented to us that they were gonna, NRG RDA was gonna do a study and Wolf Creek Park to figure out how best to market it and that sort of thing. There is a, so, I think, I don't know if we contributed, I don't think we did, I think that organization paid for the majority of that study.
Yes.
Um, if, if we are open to contributing five thousand dollars to pay for marketing the property, for the company that did the study to market the property to all of its developer contacts, it will do that, and I thought, you know, when Jenna presented that to me, NRG RDA is gonna opt to add some additional things, I think, to the study as well, but that was one I thought we might wanna buy, buy off since we're the ones who wanna get that thing sold. So I'd like to move that we allocate five thousand dollars to NRG RDA to enable the, the marketing, additional marketing of Wolf Creek Park developers.
So for the discussion, there's nine hundred acres, right? And NRG RDA is, is looking to market the entire nine hundred acres?
Yes, yes and no, I mean, some of it is developable in some ways and some of, it, it just depends on who the developer is. Um, the study, it, the emphasis of the study is to help us in the NRG RDA understand how best to market it. Um, because, for example, what kind of tax incentives and things like that we might offer um, to get it developed because of all the infrastructure costs involved in developing it. So that's part of the study and also there have been varying studies over the years and so they incorporated those, they didn't duplicate the effort. Um, but we're hoping that this, we, NRG RDA, uh, and Jenna Belter and I are hoping that this study will kinda kick us off in the right direction as far as marketing the property.
But what you said, this study will help us into maybe presume that you're an interesting party that would wanna come in and, and develop.
Right, and so the, the study is done, this is an additional service that the company that did the study has offered to actually market the property to its cadre of developers that it, you know, it has contacts through the work it does. Because its, its expertise is making developable properties attractive to developers, that's why it is informing us on how best to market it, but it, it also said that it would, you know, put the word out for us.
Imagine.
Yeah, yes.
I'll say. Here we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
The assessor.
All right, um, I, I wanna go over a few things first. When we have an opportunity for an elected official, the commission can make the appointment unless it is for one of the commission seats. Then it would have to go to the executive committee for the party that the person is a part of that's actually leaving as a county commissioner. If there is a person in legislature, whether it's a house or senate, it goes to the state executive or the county executive, executive committee for the person's political party, and then it goes to the governor and the governor gets to make a decision on who's going into that position. Um, there was some more, you know, people speculating some stuff, so we wanted to make sure we cleared that up. Second, um, we took applications through yesterday at twelve o'clock. We had some people apply and we'd like to thank those people. I'll leave it up for you guys to make some comments now if you'd like to. Great.
Well, I, I think you're referring to code number three, ten, eight, is that what you, that would be correct, uh, and how we replace if they resigned off the elected official.
I, I don't have the code division memo, but it's off.
I have the code of this.
It was in, it was in Eddie Young's letter.
Yeah.
And he, I, I correct, he correctly signed the statute.
Yeah, it was three ten.
Yeah. And you guys agree with what Doc just said, you, you both are, are comfortable agree?
We're the, I mean, I consulted Michael about it beforehand.
True.
Um, because I wanted to make sure we had it right, Rick could talk to.
Statute just changed in April.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's diff, it was different than when we, uh, had to deal with Sheriff Pridley's suspension.
And it changed what way?
Um, when Sheriff Pridley resigned, the appoint, the appointed to replace the resigning, the retiring elected official had to be the same political affiliation with the elected official at the time they resigned. And it's changed to the person appointed by the commission has to be a member of the political, same political affiliation at the time the elected official was elected.
For at least one year.
And there had, yeah, there's also a, a duration requirement of being a member of that party for here.
That's cool.
Well, I, I had a, a crap moment when I looked at that because I knew that's not what we had done. I was like, wait a minute, I thought we did it right, so I double checked, it went into effect in April of twenty twenty-five. So it just, it just went into effect.
Now, let me give you that.
Well, as, as always, and I know everybody thinks everything's very, but we do consider every application. Um, I think something very compelling was that we had a large number of support letters from the assessor's office staff in support of our in-house applicant, Tara Tyree. Um, that's untrusted in, in my experience, I mean, we do tend to hit support letters here and there, but but an overwhelming amount of support from, from people, from coworkers, where there's often, you know, more knowledge and sometimes jealousy. Um, really impressed me. Um, also Tara Tyree has impressed me, she has appeared in front of us many times. Um, for Eddie in the past, and, um, while I know that the agenda says replacement, I know that it, it would be hard to replace Eddie after all his years of service to this county. Um, but I have a lot of confidence that Tara will be the next best thing until she, until she outshines him at some point, I know we would expect and hope. Um, so I'm gonna move that we appoint Tara Tyree, we did have a couple of applicants, she has the most relevant, um, and pertinent experience.
I'll second that. So we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Tara, congratulations.
And thank you for applying, condolences also. Thank you for the opportunity, I'm forward to doing the best I can for the campaign.
Okay, one thing to add to this, uh, Eddie is gonna be here until the end of the month and then Tara will officially take over on the first of August. So congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, I really do.
We have our own.
Oh, yeah, of course, I'm like you are, I'm gonna miss him and, uh, his knowledge, but I think you made the right decision and I, you know, I'm, this job, I've been here seventeen years, I couldn't see myself doing anything else. So, thank you.
All right, go to your mother. Okay. Yeah, all right, we have ten minutes. Um, do you wanna go and can then, yeah, put the things right there. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've got two minutes.
Okay, um, I'd like to, since we have a couple of minutes for our next item, um, move that we go into executive session to discuss a couple of things. One, um, the A, um, the personnel matter, prosecute and return, personnel discussion, um, animal shelter operations, this is for legal advice and personnel discussions. Um, the record rotation policy upgrade and the lifeline ambulance requests. I'd like to seek legal advice on those two issues.
Okay, so at this time we'll go into executive session and we will be back with the first. Okay, you're heard. We are back from executive session and their decisions were made, I was trying to say all that at one time. Um, lifeline ambulance request, we have someone from the back there, okay? When you come up to the microphone, say your name and who you're with and.
My name is Matthew Todd McCurran, I'm owner and chief consecutive officer of West Virginia Lifeline Ambulance Service, LLC.
Okay.
We are coming before you all today to request people to, uh, transport our animal patients. We were licensed on May first of two thousand twenty-five by the West Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services to respond to non-tertiary convalescent emergency calls. First, we can respond to nine-one-one dispatches, we can treat our patients on scene, we are not able to treat patients without license without county commission to treat them. Currently, we are convalescent focused, which is any sort of pre-skiing calls, inter-facility training ports, appointments, return training port, et cetera. Our request to transport these patients is not for a permanent twenty-four seven pager on the nine-one-one system. Instead, we want to act as an ally to the non-resourced Fayette County. We have a taxed healthcare system that is, you know, very busy and overwhelmed in the Dan and Raleigh communities. We have reduced nurses at Platteville Medical Center, Raleigh General Hospital, Beckley ARH Hospital, um, and we have long time, sometimes short ambulance is to be turned over and released back to the county for coverage. You can take a patient to the hospital sometime, as in the ER, we're between two to six hours waiting for a bed to become available for that patient. Our goal is that when our neighboring, uh, agencies are out on nine-one-one traffic, that the Fayette County nine-one-one center will have the ability to utilize our agency, whether it be at our station or staging our units throughout the county to help to set the covering and I will go to this for the.
How many ambulances do you have?
Currently, we only have two ambulances, both of which are only basic life support licensed for the state of West Virginia.
You're, you're, you're gonna, you wanna continue to focus on convalescent care?
Correct, so that will be our primary focus, the only time that we would wish to utilize our nine-one-one capabilities is when requested by the nine-one-one center, should there be a delay in ability to provide coverage for pager. Um, you know, as everyone is aware, J-Care is our large provider and they do phenomenal covering pagers, but again, with our H Raleigh General, Platteville Medical having reduced availability availability of resources, there's always a potential that there'll be delays for ambulances to get back up on pagers, especially in our more rural areas. So we want to assist our neighboring agencies, again, this is not a competitive state, this is not for us to gain, uh, primary pager in the area. Where we're located in Knockup, we're actually right between Mount Hood Fire Department and Bradley Fire Department, J-Care隔着the road from them, so we have significant amount of EMS ratio. But by having your own authorization to mobilize our units and stage them throughout the county, fully optimized nine-one-one program response on a basic life support level.
So your basic life, your other things.
Correct, please, sir.
And how many EMTs you have?
We currently have four EMTs, all of which are nationally registered. We have three MBS, which are emergency medical vehicle operators, and we are overseen by Dr. Margaret Ainsdager, who's our medical director.
What kind, what kind of agency?
The chair receives the, um, all the medical, uh, training that we receive, chair receives the policy and criteria that we have developed for our agency, chair receives the practices, our EMTs, uh, overall form for our patients.
Is that through her position somewhere else, or, or is that a specific to just something?
That is specific to our company, she is a medical director for multiple EMS agencies throughout West Virginia, so she's not just ours, um, but this specific role is pertinent only to West Virginia.
I think everything is cool.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else wanna speak to this issue, J-Care is here.
My name's Scott Cornet, I'm head of J-Care Ambulance Service. Um, as you all know, just trying to get a few things on, you know, into the record, um, we signed this agreement, none of the three of you all were, uh, were commissioners at the time, and this, it, it has been phenomenal for Fayette County, it's like any system, no, nothing's perfect. You know, I mean, there's gonna be problems, nothing happen, but I think J-Care's relationship, one with Fayette County, nine-one-one system, with law enforcement and with fire service is phenomenal. And I think that just a couple of things that you all, I think is important for you to know. One, let me start by saying what, uh, Power says, I don't think it's a bad thing, if, because I agree that sometimes competition can get in the way. I do think that I think it would be advantageous for this county and for this commission to approve for it to be a secondary provider in the event there are no resources in one of the specific zones. I don't think they should be allowed to move to those zones to try to pick the calls apart, but I do think that it's perfectly fine if they're in one of the four zones and there are no other resources available, I think they should be allowed to respond to the animals. The truth of the matter is, I think we'd take any ambulance at that point in time, but particularly since they're Fayette County resource. One thing that I think is important for you to know, we look back at the first six months this year and one thing that Fayette County gains by using J-Care that a lot of people do not see is one, when we went to this agreement, it was because areas like Danies and some of these more, much more rural communities, particularly the Danies, Matter Bridge area, didn't have an ambulance service at, there at the time, and so the county basically said, we need to do something explosive because that's the only way we're gonna get a commitment to cover these areas that are gonna lose money. And so we have done that, um, but what, um, an additional thing you get from J-Care is we have so many resources on all three sides because we have resources in Canal County, Charleston, if we can move into the valley. We have resources from Raleigh County that we can move into the Platteville region, and we have resources from Nicholas County that we move into the New Haven District and to Danies area. So just to give you some, uh, uh, some numbers to think about, just this year alone, January one through, uh, January one through June thirtieth, J-Care moved twelve hundred and thirty-eight times, J-Care moved resources from within this county up to an area that had went out on another nine-one-one call and there were no areas, so no coverage, so we moved that area. So that's upon an average of seven, eight times a day, we moved resources to get them in the proper areas of these four zones. An additional three times a day, three hundred and eighty-six times over the course of this year, we've moved outside county resources of J-Care's into Fayette County to cover one or more of these zones. So if you just take that movement right there, ten times a day, you know, we're talking over fifteen, right at sixteen times a day, J-Care's moving resources. Another thing that I think is, you know, interesting, and I think that, uh, is important for you all to note, we spent a significant amount of money to reinvest into the community that we started in. Uh, in the last eighteen months, we have put approximately one point two million dollars invested into our responding and infrastructure here, we, six of our ten twenty-four ambulances are all brand new. They were placed in the last eighteen months. Um, now, uh, six of our ten are also, uh, all wheel drive vehicles, so we have better response in the wintertime, which has been a problem historically. So we have done that, we replaced, uh, two of our CCP trucks. Um, so we, we have come a million miles of, and just looking back, not that it's even asked of us, but I, I want, I think it's, we need to be transparent, and you know, most communities look at, if you're in a rural community, all Fayette County by terms of EMS response is considered rural. Um, Fayette County being the largest, uh, I'm sorry, Oak Hill being the largest population density of just under eight thousand, I think seventy-eight hundred or something. Um, you don't even get to a bedroom community response until twelve hours, so all of Fayette County is considered rural or super rural, which allows up to twenty minute response time. J-Care's average response time for Fayette County right now is just that eleven minutes. Um, a significant amount of our response times are way under that, if you look at Fayette County, some of these communities that we have ambulances directly located in, it's as little as, you know, six to eight minutes, uh, in Oak Hill. Now, again, no, not even covering the four zones, you, you go to areas like Spring, that, you know, Springdale, or you know, some of these areas, you know, towards Dixie or whatever, there's gonna be some extended response times, but that is, you know, basically how the system works, and we have first responders involved in that as well, so I just think it's important, like I said, I, I'm not here to, uh, to dispute what Mr. Kirk has said, I, I do think that as far as them being able to respond as a BLS resource, if there are no other resources available in the, in the zone, then I think J-Care in general. then I think J-Care and general ambulance actually would support that. I'll just be honest with you, I think it's good for the community. But I also believe that in J-Care, and it is tootin' my own horn, you know, our own horn, but I do think we do a phenomenal job. I think if you look at, and you talk to some of these other counties, they would, they would literally almost give it, give their left arm to have what Bay County has by means of not just primary nine-one-one services, but also the ability to be backed up from internal resources that we have, like I said, coming from Nicholas County, Canola County, and Raleigh County. And not to mention, although I think sometimes the nine-one-one center actually sometimes moves up Canola County as well, into Montgomery if something happens, like a back car wreck in Brandy and some of them, you know, you take two or three resources, so we deploy resources quickly. A lot of times the nine-one-one center will try to move up Canola County. But also J-Care is the only company in the state that Canola County has a mutual agreement with beyond, you know, extreme, extreme circumstances. So they move up for us a lot as well, which would be in addition to that fifteen hundred times, you know, we're moving calls in the first six months. So I'm more than willing to answer any questions. I would be encouraged, or we would like to invite each of you all to come over and look at the system, you know what I mean? And look at how our system works. And China does a phenomenal job at running our communication center, and we would love to show you how it works. And, you know, let you see live how it moves up, how we communicate with nine-one-one center, things of that nature. But like I said, I think Bay County has a great system, and we thank you all for the opportunity to serve here. We've been here now, well, November fourth of this year will be fifty-five years. So, you know, the nine-one-one center didn't even come into play until nineteen ninety. So the first twenty years of that, you know, we were basically the nine-one-one provider without a nine-one-one center, you know, in conjunction with general ambulance and things of that nature. And I'll tell you one more thing that's interesting. When J-Care purchased general ambulance in two thousand and eleven, the response times for the two companies combined averaged about thirteen minutes and, right at thirteen minutes. And like I said, if you take the averages include some of our most rural communities, Matter Bridge, Danies, Golly, Springdale, you know, just a lot of these communities, then we're down to like eleven, eleven minutes and four seconds. So I think those are response times that a lot of people would like to have in, in high population dense areas, to be honest with you. So I can answer any questions if you have any, or if not, I appreciate y'all couldn't speak to you all.
Well, I just want to say, we appreciate Rick's years at Cornet and Todd Cornet, that they provide service for Calvary, nine years they provided. And we're concerned with some basic needs for everybody. I feel that both of you are good.
Absolutely. I'm listening to you best.
Well, say back.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else like to say anything?
I want to hear from the nine-one-one side. Will you speak to this?
Basically, that's what we did already with priority ambulance.
Come on.
So they take heroes and.
The microphone will come down, champion.
Just in the past, that's what we've already done with priority ambulance. Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think, I think what he's looking forward is more formal.
And we have a support letter from the Bay County Deputy Sheriff's Association. The board of the new service being approved.
And I'm sure your dispatches are well.
Oh, wow.
I mean, they understand that the importance of that involves.
Yeah, that's part of their process. It is.
Todd.
Yes, sir.
How do you guys handle DOA transports?
Uh, it depends on the circumstance. Matter of fact, my son said he heard from y'all just talking about that, and I'm glad to approach this situation. Because of resource limitations, you know, based on the number of calls that are coming in, unfortunately, J-Care is not allowed. Well, not just J-Care, most EMS agencies that provide nine-one-one service across the state are no longer, you know, in a position where we can stay on scene a significant amount of time. Anytime we arrive at the scene, the patient is a DOA, and they're immediately released to go to a funeral home, historically, we still do that. I can show you the numbers on it if someone wants to dispute that. We do it all the time. But as far as us staying around, waiting on a medical examiner, you know, things of that nature, tying up and advanced life support ambulance to be there, just basically stand by for somebody. Really, the truth of the matter is, based on the code, that is really the funeral home's responsibility if I'm getting that patient, you know what I mean? At that point in time. But like I said, I don't have a problem. It's never been brought to our attention that there's a problem in Bay County. If there is, I would again say to the deputies that, you know, if they'd like to talk to us, we're more than willing, you know, or any of the law enforcement or anyone. But I would still assume that we move, and this is an assumption, I don't look at the numbers like, particularly on DOAs, those, you know, I mean, that's not, you know, the numbers I look at. But I would assume that we still move at least seventy to eighty percent and probably significantly more. China may, yeah, better answer that better. But of the DOAs, we move them, you know, either to a funeral home or take them somewhere to be, you know, pronounced or whatever the case may be. But in those significant situations where they're, you know, it's going to be extended times, an hour, two hours, whatever the case may be. But I, at least the policy is, if they're not doing this, we do say, at least I'm correct, you know, our team to say that we have to leave and become available for nine-one-one. If there is no one, like for instance, I don't know if it's the problem here, but like in McDowell County, sometimes there's just not a funeral home. So we will, if it's going to be an extended period of time, then we leave while they're doing their investigation or whatever the case may be. But we do tell them, if you get to the point where this patient's ready to be moved, and there is not another available resource, we will come back as long as we have somebody available, but we need to be available for the live ME right now. But other than that, that's kind of how the policy works on it.
Okay, well, the commissioner being interested in that percentage for Bay County?
Yeah.
If you could get that force?
Do you have a one percent?
No, not our.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you can just get it.
Oh, yeah. We'd be glad. We'd be glad to.
Okay.
Well, we'll get, similar to my rescue, we do, at Fire Department, we do rescue and then we do recovery. Once you're in rescue, you know, you're active, you're trying to call the people that can be helped. And then when you go to the private, you gotta get out. And I agree, you know, they have, the deputies have their issues too, because they need to protect the general public. And so, yeah, they may have seen that, because they can't go loose. So you have no objection if people run, no stalls? The lifeline, you've tired, you don't have no objection?
If we had, if we respond to a call, historically, we don't respond, not, I'm saying historically, we don't respond to just DOAs. We're, we're actually, they may come in as a DOA, but we're actually going to assess the patient to see, you know what I mean? But if there's going to be an extended period of time and we have to leave, I have no problem at all. If J-Care is not available or able for him to move those patients, I do.
I don't want to get paid though, how does that work? Because if you responded, like I'm just wondering if there's a billing.
It's, it would only be.
It's not typically billable to insurance, there's a livery fee. I think funeral homes do have the ability to get paid for those services through funeral arrangements. But as far as a, an emergency transport or something like that, it's a livery fee, I'd say.
The problem is, the removal of dead bodies historically has been under code as livery service, which is the funeral home. But now, there are circumstances, like if the patient's being moved to the ME, then basically the ME does, or the state does pay a fee for that. And it would not affect whether it be him or me. If he went and it was, and then I had to take the patient on, I'd be the one paying for it, because it's based on who transported the patient. So if I came and declared someone dead, but the Sheriff's Association decided that they needed someone, you know, to move the patient, or, you know, there was going to be a delay, and we had to leave to get available for nine-one-one, then Mr. Kirk would be paid if he did come and take the patient by the ME. If not, it would be basically, you know, a private, you know, a private.
Well, from what I see, you know, if we're going to involve Calvary, you're probably advanced, like when you look at, I mean, they're going to dispatch you. Once it becomes a situation where it's no longer advanced, then I'm sure the nine-one-one is going to work it out for you guys to be released. He would be involved, and then they can come in, and then we can release our deputy. It does, it just seems like it can be worked out, and I'm sure you, would you agree with that?
Well, I mean, we'd all just have to sit down and discuss it.
Yes.
And I don't have a problem doing that. And again, I'm open to hear, I'm unaware of the problems they're having or if there's one incident or particular incidents, I'd be more than willing to sit down and discuss this.
You just can't walk off the same.
So it's, I'll tell you that eighty percent is a wholly inaccurate number for Bay County. The only time our guys have informed us that EMS has transported has been to the medical examiner's office under directive of the OCEM. We, we've got a deputy that actually had to sit in a house for six hours of his eight-hour shift. So nearly his whole entire shift, not sitting in his home. Definitely covered up with the family, just trying to breathe and sit there because EMS refused to transport.
Was the funeral involved? Was the funeral involved, the EMS call, if he were home or the family called?
Yes.
Yeah, and the funeral didn't respond either.
They did.
They did.
But, you know, if it's a weekend, you have to, funeral home has to get there.
Yeah.
Have to come out. It's, and also the Oak Hill station is around, it's literally across the street from Tyree. So a lot of the time, you're returning to the station, funeral home, so you know, extra.
I think Mr. Cornet is trying to say we can work this out.
Well, I don't want to mislead you though. I mean, if it comes down to us being with someone that has, is a dead body or being a baby in front of the community who's sick because we're low on coverage, we're going to choose that every time. I don't want to mislead you. But no, if there are incidents where you say we have multiple ambulances available, and you have a deputy on scene for six hours, I must, I assure you, I think we can resolve that issue.
Yeah, and you'll know, you'll understand from our perspective, a policy perspective, that it's just as bad to us to have one of our few deputies tied up for six hours.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't, that just seems like, yeah, I need to know more about that specific incident, and I would hope that.
Well, it's not the only one that sits.
You have long, six hours?
I don't know about that long, it's several hours long.
Listen, we're, our agenda is now behind, but I would encourage you guys.
Matter of fact, if you want to schedule, if you'd like to schedule me, I'd be glad to sit down and talk with you.
Could you please include our nine-one-one director?
Absolutely.
In the meeting.
For sure. Absolutely.
Well, given the testimony, I'm going to move that we approve lifeline for service in Bay County based, under the conditions presented as a backup standby service.
For you all.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to go back into executive session at ten oh two.
And it's for the same thing before, the rotation policy update, animal shelter operations, and personal request, same policy being required.
Okay, welcome back to our meeting. We just came out of the executive session and no decisions were made. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Paylon.
Okay, so with regard to the record rotation policy update, do you want to, do you want to pass it provisionally pending their, on who that we provisionally pass the update? Based on my changes, did I send everybody last night? And just input from Tom and fill out some safety finish. Then would be.
I'll second. Here we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
The student academy personnel discussion. Anthony, do you want to briefly just present the salary request?
Essentially.
Budget item.
So there's a, I believe, a nine thousand dollar line item for the hiring of an intern when I requested with the county commission. Move that line item from the intern, put it to the general payroll. And then to additionally fund an increase in salaries, I ask. I asked for an additional thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars to be added to the budgeted amount for the prosecutor's office payroll.
And there's a reason for that request.
Second. We have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, with regard to animal. Now, animal shelter operations. We've had some, some issues with our animal shelter, and we wanted to consider how we might give some help to the folks we have running it. I'm going to move that we create the position, a position of shelter coordinator to help with policy updates and implementation, setting fees, the Facebook presence for the animals, operations and maintenance. People may remember that we had some water issues over the wintertime where everything froze. So that person will be responsible for ensuring that, you know, the maintenance is done and that things are done to keep the pipes from freezing, to manage the spay and neuter program that we funded some time ago, but have not implemented. Certified payroll, which is something that we reimbursed for the Humane Society liaison with Rescue and any others, including the Humane Society Board, and coordinate the volunteer at the shelter, including working with Bay County Day Report. So I move that we create that position as a county employee and have time to ensure your appetites.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, the second, I do want to add that this isn't going to take the place of anyone down at the shelter. This is just going to be an additional person to be in the liaison between the commission and the people working at the shelter. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, and so firefighters are going to be mad at me, but I have not had a chance to look at that bid process document. Got it in my packet, but I got caught up on recommendation yesterday when I was prepping and I wasn't able to get to it. So I've asked my colleagues to postpone it a week or till the next meeting. So I'm going to move that we postpone.
Until eight six.
Eight six.
Second. I have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it, I think.
They could throw it down.
That's all.